Good evening. I will call this meeting into order for the council meeting for February 25th, 2025. We will start with the pledge and Councilman Cuthbert do the pledge tonight for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Lake, would you lead us in a word prayer, please? Ben? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the approval of the minutes from January 28th, 2025.
Will we accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Faulkner and seconded by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, a sign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item of business will be additional appropriations. Madam Auditor, would you do us the honor of reading them?
Ordinance number 2025-HCCO-05. Whereas it has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the 2025 annual budget, now therefore be it ordained by the County Council of Howard County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Additional appropriations, county general, commissioners, insurance policies, $310,000. Total county general, $310,000. Lit special purpose fund, jail, FICA, $191.25. Employee service bonus, $2,500. Institutional and medical supplies, $1,738.60. Car of an individual inmate clothing, $10.37. Total lit special purpose fund, $4,440.22. Cumulative capital fund, police equipment sheriff, $500. Total cumulative capital fund, $500. Community corrections fund, full-time detention officer, reduction, $4,896. Meal reimbursements, $3,510. Total community corrections fund, a reduction of $1,386. Local health maintenance fund, medical supplies, $2,000. Office supplies, $3,000. Supplies mosquito chemicals, $2,000. Travel and training, $4,325. Equipment repair, $5,000. Equipment, $18,500. Total local health maintenance fund, $34,825. Local health department trust fund, other supplies, $24,000. Other services and charges, $5,000. Total local health department trust fund, $29,000. Lit correctional facilities, meals for prisoners, $9,712. Total lit correctional facilities fund, $9,712. Total additional appropriations for all funds, $387,091.22.
All right, thank you very much. So first on the agenda are the commissioners, and we have a special representative tonight, Ms. Isaacs.
I'm well, thank you. Sorry, I got a little excited to come chat with you all. So the commissioners asked me to come in and speak about their request. The request is for the insurance fund. We appropriated $800,000 at budget time. The actual bill that we have to pay is 1.123 million. And so we need an additional appropriation to pay those premiums for 2025. So that is the request. Any questions?
And you should have had in your packet a schedule that premium summary for everybody to review.
Did it just go up that much, or?
So we knew based on some conversations last year that we had the potential that they, well, we were not going to be renewed for the jail at all. And so we had, our broker had to go out and shop new coverage. And that's just, so instead of being with one provider, we're with about six different providers. So it did, it impacted us quite heavily.
Yeah, so it looks like basically the biggest chunk was for the law enforcement coverage.
And we were never without insurance, right?
No, 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 no. We were never without. And we are not currently without.
Can you expand a little bit on the reason why it increased so much because of the jail? Because why? Because?
Well, the reason why is because we were previously with travelers insurance across the board. And they, because of the risk with the ACLU lawsuit and the number of claims that we've had, they were, they just refused to renew our policy with them. So we had to go shop, I say we, the broker had to go out and shop additional carriers. And so unfortunately, on December 30th, we were handed this packet and said, here it is. Basically, take it or leave it. And we didn't have time because insurance would run out on the 30th, on the first. So we didn't have time to really look at it. So the commissioners have made a concerted effort this year to start earlier. We didn't, we didn't know what we didn't know. And so we've started the process much, much earlier.
Okay. What was the reasoning for the business automobile that went up 30, about 34,000?
So we had quite a few auto accidents. We continue to have quite a few auto accidents. Some are our fault and some are not our fault. But what they did is they, they raised our premium and they raised our deductible on the auto. Our auto policy is, I think, one that we have to look at very carefully. We were at a $1,000 deductible, and now we're at 2,500 for a certain level vehicle, up to 5,000 for another type of vehicle. So depending upon what gets wrecked, or what kind of an accident we're in, it could be a $5,000 deductible right off the top.
Pam, what's meant by that AM best rating that's on there?
I'm sorry?
The AM best rating, that's A double plus or A plus, or?
It's, I think it's our, I honestly don't know, so I shouldn't even begin to answer that. I'm not sure I can tell you. I'm sure it's just the rating of the county.
It's the rating of the insurance company.
Okay.
Of the insurance company?
Okay, thank you, Alan.
Okay.
Pam?
The thing I might add to what Pam has said is there are a very finite number of companies that will insure a jail, or a county for that matter. So when we say our broker was shopping this around, we're talking about looking at two or three companies at most that will even look at our claims, look at our insurance. So that's another issue. You know, there are very few companies that are in this business. And ones that are like travelers is looking to get out of this. They were, they were very quick to say, we're not going to renew you for your jail. Risk is, you know, that's where most counties have their biggest risks. So companies are in and out of that, and most companies don't want to touch that kind of insurance.
I appreciate these numbers. I don't know that we've ever been presented this sheet before, okay? And I do know on the, not just on the jail, but on the automobile side, we have had several accidents. And I don't know if there's something that we can do to help train our officers when they're driving, or anything that can be done. I don't know if anybody from the sheriff's.
I don't want to presume that it's all sheriff's department. It is not. It is not. So let's not, let's not make that presumption. They tend to have the most expensive wrecks, okay, because of their equipment. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to throw them under the bus at this point. We have a lot that aren't our fault, but they may be uninsured or underinsured, so we pay. Or, you know, those, those kinds of things happen. We have a lot of damage in the parking lot. It's amazing to me, the number of vehicles that get damaged in the parking lot. That has changed since we put cameras in. So I have to tell you, I appreciate that. We can now do a little bit better tracking of what really happened in that parking lot.
What parking lot are you talking about?
So some of our vehicles sit here, some sit behind the old Jamie's, some sit in this lot back over here. We had a health department vehicle get a baseball bat taken to it. I assume it was, I'm assuming it was a baseball bat. I don't know what it was. And they just came on down on the tailgate of a truck. And, you know, so they hit the, the, the tailgate of the truck, which then hit the bumper, which then hit the sensors, which, you know, and it's like, you have to fix it. You can't just not fix it. Because now your backup sensors don't work and all those things don't work. And so...
Oh, but you do have a camera now that, that tracks.
We can see, but, you know, only if you can identify him and only if you can get blood out of a turnip, or whatever you'd like to call it, so.
Right. So is there any solution to this, or just kind of?
I have to say that since we started having people do incident reports, if you have an accident, you have to turn in an incident report, you have to, you have to file a police report, and the sheriff's department has been very, very, very good to us. They don't call KPD. If there's an accident in a county vehicle, sheriff's department responds. They write up the police report and they, you know, then we don't have to pay to get the report and do all those kinds of things. So they help us a great deal. So we've done better in the last probably two years than we did three years ago. Three years ago, it was really bad. But, you know, that travelers takes that loss. And, and they just keep looking. And you have to remember too, that we just settled some pretty significant accidents.
Well, that as a whole, insurance is just not fun to be in if you're paying for deductibles and everything. So thank you for all your work, Pam. Anyone else has questions, ask them otherwise, we'll move on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Sheriff Asher. I don't see him, so Todd, you up? No, I'm joking. Jessica can present for you.
I mean, if you want, you can read it if you want. You just have to read one through five. That's it.
After all your reading earlier.
I know.
Todd, fire poker, everybody.
Apparently, we need some money, I would guess. Right, Jessica? The first one, we need $2,691.25 for a lateral transfer. For $2,500 at FICA, this money be, will be from the commissary. So that's a good start.
Yep, that's great. That's great.
We need $9,712. This is money paid from the work release for meals from the jail. We didn't get a check until January, but since it was for an invoice from 2024, we'll have to ask for an additional appropriation, have access to it for this year.
Good job.
Yeah, you're good. Good job, Todd.
We're doing good. We need $500. This is for K9 equipment that we sold at the end of 2024. But again, we didn't get the check until January, so we have to ask for additional appropriation, access that money. We need another check, another check we received for an invoice from 2024. So we have to ask for an additional, to ask the, this money. No idea what that's for. Jessica, do you know?
What number is that?
1114 dot 23350 dot 000 dot 380.
So that would be your institutional medical supplies.
Yeah, we need more money.
Yeah.
That's just normal. And then when, for 1114 dot 23740 dot 000 dot 0380, another check we received in January for an invoice from 2024. So we asked that, we have to ask for additional appropriation for that money. Does that make sense?
Nicely done.
There you go. That's all I got for you.
So a lot of it's just encumbrances that we're just rolling against here. Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Great job.
Excellent. May have you a regular up here and have Jerry sit down. Okay. So James Vest is not here tonight. So what do you guys want to do with that? Do we want to go ahead and look at it, move on with it, or should we table it until next?
I think we've made, our policy in the past has been to table it.
Have you heard from him?
He said he's not going to be able to make it.
Okay.
And he said it was okay. It wasn't time sensitive, so we needed to table it. And for the next meeting, we were fine to do that.
He apologizes. He forgot that it was on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so this is like 11:68?
And 12:06.
I make a motion that we table these two funds until the director can be here, James can be.
Second that motion?
All right, motion's been properly made and seconded to table those two funds till next month. All those in favor of that table on this appropriation, sign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we will table those. And then that brings us to Dustin DeLong.
Good evening. Just one, a couple of things here today. Mr. Faulkner may have jinxed me last time with the saying I was right on spot or very thorough with that. I realized I had a couple of errors based on, when I went back to my office, our grant, our DOC grant and the county budget still didn't match. So I had to go back to the spreadsheets and found that I had a couple of errors. So that's why I am requesting this reduction in the full-time detention officer line item of $4,896 and an increase in our meals of $3,510. It's the same thing I was here for last time, is making adjustment to those two line items only, so that we are now in line with our grant and our county budget match after this change.
That makes you happy, makes the auditor happy, and makes DOC happy.
Yeah, it makes everybody happy. It's easier to track and hopefully we keep it clean this year, so.
What I meant to tell you was I appreciated your attention to detail on all those items. I mean, it's quite the, quite the exhibition of accounting and checking columns and everything else. So congrats to you for doing that.
Well, I appreciate it. It is cumbersome because of the timelines of funding. And you, we don't know our, we have state mandated increases. We have a lot of things that happen, but our grants are due in April, which is before we know what our salaries are for the next year. And then we don't know what the county's going to do with increases. So you submit one hopeful of all this stuff, and then you have to go back and adjust both of them to match with whatever is approved. So thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dustin.
All right, that should be everybody in the additional appropriation listed. Do I?
Are you ready for a motion?
Do I hear a motion on ordinance 2025?
I move that we accept the, and approve the additional appropriations that we discussed and the ones that we've already postponed and tabled for next time. We'll discuss them later, but all the others, we approve.
Motion's been made by Councilman Faulkner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Cuthbert with the second. Properly made and seconded. All those in favor, sign aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is transfers. Madam Auditor, would you read the transfer resolution?
Resolution number 2025-HCCR-04 Transfers. Whereas the county council may approve the transfer of money from one major budget classification to another within a department or office if the transfer does not require the expenditure of more money than the total amount set out in the budget as finally determined, and if the transfer is approved at a regular public meeting and by the proper ordinance. Be it resolved by the county council of Howard County, that it's desired and deemed necessary that the following transfers be made within the accounts of the designated funds as set out below. Pre-trial service grant 2024 fund, part-time probation officer to FICA, $1,875.
All right, that was short and sweet. Dustin, you're back up.
Again, this is another grant. This is a different grant fund source. We do have a part-time position that was funded through this grant, a total of $25,000. However, I didn't budget for the FICA that comes along with that salary, and I don't have anywhere else to pay that at this point in time. So that's why we're transferring $1,875 out of the salary line item into the FICA line item on that, so we can pay out the entire amount this year, without any negatives, hopefully.
I appreciate you trying to find that through a transfer and make that work this early in the year. So thank you.
Well, Jessica, she called me on it. First payroll of the year. She said, hey, this is going to be a problem. Oh, okay, we can fix this. That's not, not impossible. Thank you.
Dustin, I'd just like to say that I do appreciate all that you do to keep your, your budget and your grants in order. I know it's a cornucopia of different grants and funds that come into your office to make it work. And also, Madam Auditor, I'd like to thank you and your staff for making it happen also. It's, it's, sometimes it's just a wonderment to me how you keep it together with that.
I appreciate that. Struggled a little bit last year. This year's going to be better. I keep saying it, it's going to be better this year. Last year, we derailed a little bit, was not able to pay as much attention throughout the year, the things that needed attention. So we tried to do a lot of cleanup towards the end of the year. And we still have some issues, but we're going to try to fight through it and do better this year. So I do appreciate your time. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that should take care of transfers. Do I, hearing motions on transfer resolution 2025-HCCR-04?
Make a motion, Mr. President, to approve the transfers as presented.
Second. Motion's been properly made by Councilman Roberts and seconded by Councilman Sanders. All those in favor, a sign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the salary ordinance amended, amendments, I'm sorry. Madam Auditor?
Ordinance number 2025-HCCO-06 Salary Ordinance Amendments. An ordinance amending and increasing staffing and salary authorization to be paid county employees for the calendar year effective January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, as originally approved for the year 2025, except where otherwise noted. Be it ordained by the council of Howard County, Indiana, that for the said fiscal year, the following salary amendments are approved as additional changes to the basic salary ordinance for the same fiscal year. Necessary personnel services, personal services appropriations have been approved previously to support the required expenditure of necessary funds. Lit special purpose fund, jail, FICA, $191.25. Employee service bonus, $2,500. Community corrections fund, full-time detention officer, reduction, $4,896.
All right, thank you very much. Any discussion on the salary ordinance amendment? Hearing none, I will take a motion on the ordinance number 2025-HCCO-06.
Move to approve salary ordinance as spoken of by the president.
Second.
All right, motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilwoman Lake and Councilman Alexander. All those in favor, a sign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, old business. Do we have any old business tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. And we will start with Judge Dahl.
Got some handouts for you, too.
Thank you, Judge. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're not talking about a lot of money here, but a little, little background. So last year before I took the bench, I found out about the Indiana Office of Court Services Grant Reform for Courts. It's, it's meant as money that the state can kick out there to the courts that want to improve the court systems for access to justice, technology increase, and overall improvements. Well, I found out about the grant the day it was due. So I ran to the courthouse and I'm like asking people in each court, like, hey, what do we need in the courtrooms? Like, what are the things that we actually need? So I got some quick feedback, drafted up something sloppy, unfortunately, and shot it down to the state. And last month, they said, hey, Blake, by the way, we granted your request for the court reform grant, so we're going to give you $8,500. So what I'd asked for was money for a mobile lectern, because we only have one in the courthouse. So if there's hearings going on or trials, the prosecutors and defense attorneys will run and grab from one court, bring it back to another, and it's like a fight over a lectern. It's the funniest thing. And the one that we do have is quite beaten up. It's been knocked over quite a few times. So I looked it real quick to see, hey, can we get a mobile lectern? It's got some audio functions built into it and developed a price, as well as two wireless microphones, because for some reason they disappear, they get used, and then all of a sudden they disappear. So that, some electronic civil and criminal jury instructions, so that they don't have to buy a subscription to it. This would be like a one-time use. Usually just good for a year, but at least then we can, instead of having a subscription for one court, we can kind of pass the DVD along to other courts, so the court staff can pull those for jury trials for civil and criminal, as well as a metered mail postage machine that does stuffing of letters. So right now, when, when jury notices go out, our staff are sitting there doing it by hand. So they're sending out hundreds of notices. They're taking the paper, they're folding it, they're address labeling it, they're putting the stamp on there, licking it, and sticking it in a, like in a pile to be mailed out. So we wanted to get a machine that could actually do all of that for them. That was like the big thing everyone talked about. And then the last thing that I got was the request from security to get an additional stun cuff. But right now, the county only has one stun cuff. So if we have a hearing and it's somebody, like we just had a murder trial hearing across the way, and the defendant there who's dressed in street clothes is wearing a stun cuff. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, it's, it's, a stun cuff is, is a cuff that goes usually around the ankle, and so the person can wear regular street clothes and not be in handcuffs. And if they get out of, out of control, or they try to run, the security staff sitting there just hits a button and they get a huge jolt of electricity with their body, takes them down. So, but if we have more than one trial going on at the time, only one courtroom's going to get to use that stun cuff. So... So court security staff said, hey, can you get us a stun cuff? So I didn't know what a stun cuff was until that moment. So those were the five items. They said, hey, you can spend money on these things. So they granted us. It cost about $8,500. They gave us the grant. On page one is the grant award letter. Page two is the terms and conditions. You can see that I signed. Page three, and this is from a decrease, is the claim form. And page four is just all of the program agreement requirements. So basically, what we would do is we would purchase it and then submit the reimbursement form, and they would pay us back. So what I'm here tonight to do is just to ask the county to give us a line of accounting and to fund those purchases upfront, and have the auditor's office submit the claim form to get repaid back that money. So it'd be temporarily fronting us the money to purchase those items and get that money paid back. So it's a reimbursable grant. And then I do promise this year, because now I know about the grant, I'm gonna sit down with the other judges and say, hey, how can we get the most out of this grant? And so our county doesn't have to whip over money to buy things for us. Anyway, so that's why I'm here, just to ask for that line of funding to take care of those items.
Is this $8,500? Is that the maximum, or is there more that you could get?
Well, that's maximum that they allowed for us. And had I known about the grant earlier and had time to research other needs we might need, I probably could have got that a little bit higher.
That's why I'm asking. So next, or you could...
Absolutely. I mean, they have a lot of money. I know my friend up in Newton County who just took the bench, he asked for, he had his staff like look into technology needs, and they gave him a lot of money. They didn't have video services, so they had to walk the people over from the jail in a chang gang every time. So now they're gonna get TVs and all this Zoom equipment that they've never had. They're a very rural county. But lots of counties got funds, some more than others. So this year, I'm hoping that we can really take advantage of the opportunities that the state's providing to us.
So do you have enough money with the $8,500 to do the folding, dumping machine, plus the other things? I mean, that, some of those things are kind of costly, I know.
You're right. They're very costly. So because I had such a short period of time, I mean, I had less than 12 hours to put some together. I was just Googling, literally Googling things to figure out, how much do these machines cost? They do have machines that fall underneath that. I estimate it to be about $1,500. So these aren't massive machines, but ones that can pump out a couple hundred in a short period of time and really save some time. Now, unfortunately, a lot of those machines also come with subscriptions for like metered postage. So I've had my staff looking up the companies that provide these machines, what the cost for metered postage was. And we internally actually determined that we would save like, something like a cent per stamp if we moved over to the metered postage versus sending our staff to the post office to go pick up, you know, boxes of stamps. So, and that's actually been a problem we've had recently. We sent them over to pick up stamps, and the post office said, well, we don't have enough to fulfill your order right now. So maybe moving over to metered would actually be better for us. So we'll find out if we can, if the machine we want, we can afford. But I feel like the $1,500 should cover it.
What kind of a motion do you need? Do you have a number for this?
No. So we'll have to get a fun number. So then we would put it on the March additionals.
Okay.
And then, but I don't know if you guys would want him to present again? Or if you'd just be okay if we put him on additionals for March, and that'd be okay? We'll give him.
He doesn't need to present again.
Yeah.
So Alan, do you need a motion for us to allow Jessica to make this line item then?
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, easy afternoon. You get $8,500 in grant writing?
Yeah.
That's a nice skill to have.
It is, right? And I'm hoping that we can kind of follow after, I think it was Elkhart County. They instituted a technology-wide upgrade for all their courts, where every juror sitting in juror box gets an iPad. And as, whether it be civil or criminal, when they present like an exhibit, and then it's published to the jury, it goes to the individual iPads. The juror can actually review it. And that goes with videos and all sorts of stuff. So that's, this next coming grant cycle, I actually would like to ask them for funds to cover that, to provide that for all of the courtrooms. It'd be a nice little technology upgrade. It'll say paper, anyway.
So we need a motion for Jessica to give this grant a number, and then the council will look at the additional appropriations in March.
Yes.
Second. Do you have a second?
Is that a motion from you? All right. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Lake and seconded by Councilman Faulkner.
So I'm understanding Jessica's gonna get a funding number for this, and we'll deal with it next, but you don't have to come back.
Okay. I appreciate it. So I believe the process, I still have to go see the commissioners as well, is that right? And ask them for a thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you all so much.
Mr. President, before he takes off, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish Judge Doll happy birthday.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Today?
Yeah, it's today.
You got a birthday buddy right here.
Really? Happy birthday.
Yeah. All right. So all those in favor of the motion that was made and seconded to make a line item for this grant, so assign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge. Welcome.
All right. Next item of new business, we have a couple things from our public defender, Mr. Brandon Bosch.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A few items today. First, I'd like to present an annual report to the council. Under Indiana Code, the Public Defender's Office shall report at least annually to the council regarding the operation of the office. And included in that report will be reference to the comprehensive plan that has been updated for the intelligent defense services. And then I have an appropriation ordinance. So in 2024, all the major felony public defenders were in compliance with the caseload guidelines and standards for each quarter and qualified for the full 40% reimbursement from the commission. However, our two chins attorneys and our juvenile attorney were out of compliance with excessive caseloads. And we've submitted an explanation with our fourth quarter reimbursement request outlining how we will bring those three public defenders into caseload compliance going forward. And that was dealt with with our budget. And we've transferred a major felony public defender to do juvenile and chins cases for 2025. And I am increasing my caseload on the major felony cases to make up for the loss of the public defender that's now doing juvenile and chins cases. But we believe this will satisfy the commission and anticipate receiving the full reimbursement for the fourth quarter. The Public Defender's Office received 2,856 case assignments from the courts in 2024, which was down 233 cases from 2023. The largest reduction in cases came from petitions to revoke, which were down 158 cases. Petitions to revoke are probation in-home or work release violations. There can be rules violations, or if the individual were to commit a new criminal offense, that would be a violation of their probation or work release or in-home. We appreciate that there were 158 less cases for us to cover. However, it didn't really help us financially, since the probation violation cases don't count towards the public defender's caseloads. Because once a case is assigned, it only gets assigned for their purposes of counting for caseload weight one time. So if they go out and commit violation after violation after violation, it goes back to the same public defender to represent them, but they don't get credited weight on their caseload for those cases. Our misdemeanors were down 84 cases from 2023 to 2024. And our level six felonies were down 64 cases. However, as I mentioned, the chins and termination of parental rights cases were up 43 cases. And the majority of those were termination of parental rights, where children are taken from the home. And if the parents don't get with the program and work towards reunification, at some point, the court has to proceed with the termination of parental rights. And unfortunately, those cases were up significantly in 2024. The total cases for 2023 were 3,089, and in 2024, as I mentioned, 2,856. Our total actual expenditures for 2024, including salaries, expenses, insurance, benefits, everything, the total was 2,000, or excuse me, $2,726,152. And our reimbursement from the commission, assuming we get approved this fourth quarter, will be a total of $935,318. The Public Defender's Office, so I guess before I go forward, if there are any questions about the brief summary of our previous year, I'd be glad to take those. Otherwise, I'll proceed with the comprehensive plan.
I have a question.
Sure.
Sorry, I talk too much. But the one that you said that they don't get credit for, they don't get the 40% for, if it's the same case, that, what'd you say?
Right. If someone's charged with a crime and a public defender is appointed to represent them, it goes towards our caseload weight. But after they're sentenced, if they're placed on probation or in-home or work release, and then they have a violation, that new violation, they reassign a public defender for the case, but it doesn't count towards our caseload weight.
So we don't get the 40% for it?
They just don't count.
Doesn't count.
Doesn't count.
As a case.
Okay.
Does that, does that person get assigned to the same public defender?
Typically, they do unless there's a conflict. I typically try to reassign it to the same public defender who had their case before. They're familiar with the defendant. Hopefully, I've built some rapport with the defendant. They're familiar with the case. But normally, the violation, I mean, it's not a matter of did they commit this crime? It's did they violate this rule, or did they catch a new case that they're charged with? But typically, they're reassigned to the same public defender who had their case originally. Unless, if there was a new crime and the victim is, has been represented by that same attorney, then we may have to reassign it to someone else.
How big is the group that you're talking about that would have multiple cases against them that, you know?
More than half of the cases that we get assigned, they have multiple cases.
So is that several hundred?
Well, we had 2,856 cases, so another 1,300 at least.
1,300 are repeat offenders? Is that what you're saying?
There's a lot of repeat offenders. We get to know some of these people very well over decades.
With the petition to revoke numbers being down 158 cases from the previous year, is that because we're allowing them to serve their entire sentence and not be on parole?
Well, that's part of it. Because, I mean, we'll see cases where the defendant may have a violation, get a short punishment, or a portion of his sentence is imposed, and then he goes back on in-home or work release, and then they get another violation. And they serve a little bit, and then they get another. Well, they've taken a little harder stance, where you're coming back in on a second or third violation, you're just gonna serve the rest of your time. And so that's cut down the numbers.
I think I'm glad to see that, because I think I'm seeing that in our jail population.
Right.
It's coming down, and I think this has been a...
And you can thank Cheyenne for that, because she's had a lot to do with handling, she's handling most all the violations, for at least the vast majority being level six felonies. But the patience with them, when they come in and say, just give me one more chance, please, just give me... Well, this is, you know, three strikes, you're out. It's now time to go serve the rest of your sentence.
Is there a way, do you see it in your crystal ball, that by keeping that policy of just letting the inmates serve their sentence as given, that we could get them through the system and reduce the dishes to revoke so that our population does drop and stays down to a number that we can manage?
If they're being sent to the Department of Corrections. And I think what I'm seeing recently is, especially on these level six felonies, where if they only had 150 days or 80 days or so left, they would just serve it out in the county jail. But now I'm seeing more and more of them with that much time left that got their balance of their sentence are getting shipped off to the Department of Corrections. And I think that's helping reduce the jail population. And I'm not sure, I was under the understanding that's up to the sheriff. And once they get a certain number, they'll let the Department of Corrections know. But then sometimes they have to wait on the Department of Corrections to say, okay, now we have enough available beds that we can come and pick up 25 or 50 inmates and move them on. So apparently, they may be seeing a little bit lower numbers in the Department of Corrections, so they're available to be quicker to come and pick up people who are just serving out of balance of a sentence.
Thank you very much for that information. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You mentioned both misdemeanors and level six felonies assigned to the public defenders was down. Can we read anything into that? Is crime in the county generally down? Are more people hiring their own attorneys, or is there anything we can glean from that?
I don't see a significant increase in the number of people hiring private counsel. I think we're still seeing some of the lingering effects of COVID, where some of those old cases, especially the very high-level cases, where they weren't getting a trial, are now, you know, we're doing multiple murder trials and very high-level cases. And so the prosecutors are spending more time preparing those cases and not filing new cases. Not that I think there's a backlog, but I did happen to see Mr. McCann on WRTV 6 last night indicating that on occasion, they'll get backed up a week or two of new filings, because the prosecutor who's, would be the one filing those, is working around the clock to prepare for, you know, a very high-level felony trial. And I don't know if there's been any policy changes with... And I don't know if there's been any policy changes with the Sheriff's Department or Police Department on prosecuting some of the low-level misdemeanors, where they have a little bit of discretion on driving while suspended or. But I don't think it's because they're hiring more private counsel. And that's just my personal assessment. But when you're looking at twenty-eight hundred, three thousand cases, and the misdemeanors are only down sixty-four, and there's usually around seven hundred, it's a little bit down, but but not much. But it is good to see it's heading the right direction.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, well, the the Public Defender's Office this year, and I, something I've been working on for, it's taken almost two years to complete, was an update of the Comprehensive Plan for Indigent Defense Services. It was first drafted in two thousand four, when Howard County went on the reimbursement program. And it hadn't been updated since. So we took it upon ourselves to update the Comprehensive Plan. And basically, that entailed taking all of the amendments that have taken place in the standards and the guidelines from the commission and putting them into the Comprehensive Plan. So this plan incorporates all those amendments, the statutes, and the commission guidelines and standards that have occurred. And I have a copy to pass out to each of you of the new plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay.
But the plan itself is about thirteen pages. And then we put an appendix to the plan. And then we did cite throughout the plan to the appendix, which includes the specific commission guideline or the specific statute that is attached. So that if you read through the plan and you're like, where does that come from? What's the what's the basis for that? You can flip right to that page and read the statute or read the commission guideline that references that. So I think that would help if you're really interested in seeing how the Public Defender's Office operates and what what our guidelines are. It's all laid out there. I welcome any of you to contact me personally. Day or night, you can call. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. You don't need any action on this because this is through your.
Right, the the plan was approved and adopted by the Public Defender Board, as well as the Commission on Court Appointed Attorneys. They've changed their name. It used to be the Indiana Public Defender Commission. They are now called the Commission on Court Appointed Attorneys. They felt their name got confused with the Indiana Public Defender Council. And people got confused, council, commission, who does what? So they renamed themselves Commission on Court Appointed Attorneys. We will continue to strive to provide efficient, effective, and competent representation for our indigent defendants in Howard County. I think the the staff that we have right now, the Public Defender Office is, in the twenty-five years that I've been with the Public Defender's Office, this is the best staff we've had. There's some really good lawyers doing public defense work. And I think they do a good job. I mean, we're going to get complaints from people who aren't satisfied that they're but a lot of times, they just don't want to own up to what they're going to have to face from from what they did. But I think the overall of the office does. I've got some really good public defenders working in our office.
Can you take a general question about?
Sure.
Who gets to work in your office? So I'm thinking of interns. I realize you don't want to have somebody that hasn't passed the bar yet, probably to be a public defender, you know? But is there, you know, you read about Judge so-and-so clerked for some Supreme Court justice. Is there any role for, I'm going to say, law students to serve in a county as like an assistant to the public defender or stuff like that, like internships?
We have a couple interns now.
You do? Now, how are they funded?
It's they're not paid. It's volunteer. But we get law students who are interested in interning just for the experience.
Okay.
And to put on their resume when they graduate law school and go out looking for a job, that they they can show they have some experience, they worked in a in a public defender's office and and some of the work they've done, but they're.
So those internships, would they last for like ten, twelve weeks or something like that? Or less, or is there any typical timeframe for that?
Usually, it's a semester. And some of the schools, some of the high schools even, will give credit. We've got two interns now that are in high school.
Really?
That are interested in going to law school. And they're kind of tagging along with one of the public defenders and going to court with them on a regular basis and just observing and learning. And when I was in law school, there was an intern program. Once you got far enough in law school, they would actually let you, under the supervision of the attorney, participate in part of the process. We don't do that with the high school students. But we do let them, encourage them to to be there and watch and learn. There's so much can be learned from just just watching and seeing how the system works.
Do schools know about that in general, all the schools in Howard County and?
I'm not sure that they do. These students are from Peru. But we occasionally will get law students that.
So is there a connection with somebody that's already a public defender?
We have a public defender from Miami County that's working in Kokomo. And that and that's how that connection was made.
I was just curious if there's any, if you will, avenue for law students to serve in a, I'm going to call it like an internship public defender role. Sounds like there is.
Well, and there's, I'm sure you'll hear from Mr. McCann. There's a House Bill ten oh six that is just passed the House and is going to the Senate, sponsored by IPAC, the Indiana Prosecutor Council. And they are asking for money, which I believe is going to pass. And they will begin reimbursing the deputy prosecutor's salaries at fifty percent if they comply with certain guidelines. They initially had in their caseload limits, but that was taken out. But they've they do have some guidelines on requirements for the prosecutors. And and included in that, there will be a fifty percent reimbursement from the state for those deputy prosecutors, like the forty percent reimbursement we're getting. And also included in House Bill ten oh six is to bump the public defender reimbursement up from forty percent to fifty percent to match.
To be equal.
The prosecutors. I anticipate beginning in twenty twenty-six, that's going to happen.
And you think that bill will pass?
I do.
So a state mandates that we that they set the pay for the prosecutors. And then they set the pay, we pay the prosecutors. Then they're going to reimburse the county fifty percent of what they mandate we pay prosecutors.
They'll set a minimum.
And then likewise, that'll.
Trigger the public defenders.
Right.
But they set a minimum of fifty-five percent of a full-time prosecutor's salary, which I believe comes out to right under a tick under a hundred and one thousand for a full-time prosecutor, deputy prosecutor. And our deputies are making a little bit more than that. So it won't be an increase in their salary. But it will be a fifty percent reimbursement beginning next year. So I think that should be great news to the county that you don't necessarily have to increase their salaries, but you're you're already in compliance to get the reimbursement. And then ours will bump up from forty percent to fifty percent.
I take the numbers that you gave us earlier. And we paid out two million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We got a reimbursement of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for actual cost, which that money came back to the general fund.
Right.
For actual cost for the Public Defender's Office for two thousand and twenty-four is one million, seven hundred and ninety thousand. That sound?
I think that sounds about right.
Okay.
Now, you have to understand, the misdemeanor, public defenders are not included in the reimbursement. And then there's a cap on the insurance up to, I want to say it's thirteen five. So they'll reimburse forty percent up to the cap. And I think we were well over that cap in expenditures. But we didn't get a full forty percent reimbursement for insurance. And then we didn't get reimbursement for the misdemeanors or for my administrative staff or the time that they spend working on those misdemeanor cases, which we estimate about ten percent. But that's ten percent of her thirty-nine thousand dollar salary. Much smaller number.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate all you do.
Yeah, thank you.
So Andy, are you wanting to us, are you going to read this? Or can we just focus through Alan since we've got it in front of us or?
Sure. And it's it's the same ordinance I presented each year. It's for our supplemental funds, expenditures from the fund to be made by the auditor and treasurer upon submission to the auditor of a claim form indicating the item of expenditure, which will be paid upon receipt of the claim without need for the ordinary advertising of other claims submitted for payment from the general fund. And trust me, I'm very tight with that supplemental fund money on on what it is spent for. But there are times that we need to to use those funds for deposition costs or court reporting costs or or translation or. And occasionally, we've had cases where a defendant who is not a public defender can ask the court to order the Public Defender's Office to assist from the supplemental fund for expenses they may be able to afford their attorney, but they can't afford an expert. So they'll go to the court and ask that the Public Defender's Office assist from the supplemental fund for those expert witness expenses. And we've had a few of those this year. It's not very common. But on occasion, we'll get, when those Indianapolis attorneys find that out and and they want to come and they think they're going to get a blank checkbook. But we try to whittle it down if they want investigator expenses. We've got two investigators, they can use them. If they want a local office to operate out of, we've got space in our Public Defender's Office. We'll set you up with a desk and you can use that. So we try to to keep those costs down so that we don't eat up that supplemental fund representing private clients and their out-of-town attorneys.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you for all you do in your office and for all you're going to do in twenty-five as you stepped up and you guys are moving some positions around and or responsibilities around. So any other questions for Mr. Vandembosch?
We need to approve this ordinance for you.
Yep, yep. You beat me to it, Martha.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. So yeah, do I hear any motions on the appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-five HCCO dash oh seven?
Move to approve this presented.
Thank you.
All right, motion made by Councilman Alexander, Councilman Faulkner. All those in favor, assign aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. All right. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Best of luck to you.
Right. We have one other item of new business. And Ms. Seacres will do us the honor of going through this.
Okay, this is Resolution number twenty twenty-five HCCR dash oh five. This is for a twenty twenty-four budget amendment. So it's whereas the county council may approve the transfer of money from one major budget classification to another within a department or office, if the transfer does not require the expenditure of more money, then the total amount set out in the budgets is finally determined. And if the transfer is approved at a regular public meeting and by the proper ordinance, be it resolved by the County Council of Howard County that it's desired and deemed necessary that the following transfers be made within the accounts of the designated funds as set out below. So this is the twenty twenty-four budget amendment, and it was for County General Superior Four. Postage to Court Reporter two thousand five hundred. Dues and subscriptions to Court Reporter seven hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents. So we had to do this because we had an account that went negative. And we did this in January to, I guess, February, to make our funds full for our annual financial report.
Just a couple of counts that we need to transfer from to make everything balanced and legit from twenty twenty-four. Right? Okay.
If we approve.
Second.
All right. You want to go ahead and do this one? You got another one?
Yep.
Okay. So motion has been properly made and seconded by Brian and Frank or Frank and Brian?
Yep.
By Frank and Brian. Do I hear all those in favor of approving HCCR oh five? Assign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, transfer resolution carries. And something else now.
Also, I have the encumbrance report, which is in your packets. And I just have to have a motion and a second for that. Our grand total for encumbrances this year is one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Okay, do I have any motions on the encumbrance report?
Make a motion, Mr. President, to approve the encumbrance report as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Sanders, motion made by Councilman Roberts. All those in favor, assign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, encumbrance report carries. All right.
The positive thing, I think, here is the general fund total encumbrance was only two hundred and six, seven forty-five sixty was that general fund amount. That's good.
Yeah. Pretty good. All right, any other council business?
Just one short comment. I had the opportunity to go to the Indiana County Council's Association. They gave us a copy of this book. It's a guidebook for a lot of information about taxes, funds, various things about county governance and especially for county council members. I read it briefly first, and I reread it and highlighted several things. And I think. And I think it's a well-done reference book. And I'm glad we're able to get this from the Indiana County Council's manual and the group there. So this is a good reference book.
Thanks for getting us that, Frank, and thanks for you and Martha. And I'm not sure who else went, but whoever attended that conference, thank you for going.
Oh, Martha, there's plenty of ammunition.
Well, I didn't get to go on Wednesday because I had a reaction to something. Anyway, but Frank went both days, but the Tuesday was a really good day too. So there's a lot to be learned just by talking to the different council people, listening. Good. Really good.
Yep. Sorry, you done, Martha?
Well, just Frank brought me a book when he got home, and I really appreciated that.
Likewise. Thank you, Frank, for special delivery, Pony Express. And Mr. President, if I can make one comment, please. I would just like to say that this meeting right here, listening to the different presentations, is a really good reason why term limits are not necessarily a good idea because the revenue streams and the expenditure streams are so vast and complex, so diverse, that it takes a while to become familiar and to understand them. And today, I think we got a nice example from Public Defender Vanden Bosch. And when I first came onto council, I thought, well, term limits probably be a good thing. But the more I've seen how hard it was to understand all the complexities, it takes time on the council to let it sink in. So just wanted to toss that out there and just food for thought, a point to ponder. Quotable quote.
Yeah. Thank you, John.
I have an email that I received about three-thirty or so. Holly Becker wanted to be here. She couldn't be here because she was taking care of a situation with a child and a family. But she asked me to read this to you. She says, "To members of the Howard County Council, on behalf of the CASA program of Howard County, I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to Frank Faulkner for the opportunity to speak at the Rushville Lions Club about our CASA program. Thanks to this engagement, we now have two new prospective volunteers eager to make a difference in the lives of children in our community. Your ongoing support of our mission is truly invaluable, and we deeply appreciate your commitment to our mission of advocating for children in our community. Thank you, Holly Becker, Director CASA."
Yeah, she spoke at our most recent Rushville Lions Club meeting. And we have those meetings open to the public on topical subjects. And she did a wonderful job. I mean, there are some really tragic stories with kids that have been bouncing around in foster homes for, you know, like twenty or thirty different foster homes. And it's quite an important area that the volunteers with heart for caring for kids can be very helpful. That's why we invited her.
Thank you for allowing me to read that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Pam, and thank you, Frank, for doing that, setting that up. And thank you to our distinguished guests down there for sitting and being good the entire meeting. Good job. Happy birthday, buddy.
Yeah.
How old?
How old are you?
Six.
Six.
That's getting up there.
So with that, I have our next regularly scheduled meeting right here, March twenty-fifth, four P.M. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, my goodness, everybody's ready to go. I want to give it to Councilman Sanders and Councilman Alexander. All those in favor of adjourning, a sign aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.